I'd like to call this meeting to order at 6:03, please. Commissioner Jimenez, can you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sure. Right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jimenez. Roll call, please.
Good evening, Commissioners. Commissioner Flores.
Present.
Commissioner Jimenez.
Present.
Commissioner Mora.
Present.
Vice Chairperson Ayala. Chairperson Carvajal.
Present.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Number four, Ex parte communications. This section is intended to allow all officials the opportunity to reveal any disclosure regarding site visits or ex parte communications about public hearings. Are there any ex parte communications, starting from Commissioner Flores?
None.
Commissioner Jimenez.
None.
Commissioner Mora.
None.
Vice Chair Ayala. Chair Carvajal, none. Public comments. Public comments are now open. Anyone joining us through Zoom can use the raise hand function if you wish to make a public comment on any item on the agenda or not on the agenda. The Planning Secretary will see if you have raised your hand through the Zoom application. Please note that you will have three minutes to speak.
Madam Chair, we have no raised hands.
Thank you so much. I will now close public comment and move on to the next item. And we are going to move the agenda to start with announcements. We're waiting on our first presentation. So Commissioner Flores, again, do you have any announcements you'd like to make?
No announcements.
Commissioner Jimenez.
No announcements.
Commissioner Mora.
Yes. This Saturday, another block party is being hosted by Police Services Center, and this is at Santa Fe Springs Park, I believe. So yeah, come get your hot dogs and your hamburgers and have fun. They got potato sack races, and they got water balloon tosses and whoa-whoa contests. It's a lot of fun for a lot of the kids. And then another reminder also, on July 22nd, at Los Ninos Park, everybody's invited, but Commissioners, if you could be there just to represent our department. Los Ninos Park is scheduled to celebrate park and recreation, just kind of like a middle-of-the-summer festivities. And we're going to have our park and recreation committee present as well, and then all the rec leaders to kind of do a midsummer thing. And finally, last Monday, you know, I had the honor and opportunity to attend Paul Nakamura's 20th year anniversary that he was killed in battle during the Iraqi war, Iraqi Freedom War. And it was just a 20-year celebration, and yeah, a lot of people weren't in attendance. It was an honor to be there. And we all, a lot of us know the Nakamura family. It was their son.
Thank you. Commissioner Ayala. And for myself, inviting everybody on July 3rd to our city celebration at Los Natos Park. That's going to be fun. I also attended last Saturday as well, the Safe Neighborhood Party at Los Natos Park, representing Planning Commission along with Commissioner Mora. And I just encourage all Commissioners, any events, let's go and be seen. People do ask many questions, believe it or not, on the Planning Commission and things that they really do not know. So we should be there to help and represent our, our board, which is something I think is really good. And I appreciate that, so we'll make sure we go to that. And staff, do we have announcements?
I have two quick announcements. First announcement is in regards to the Chris and Pitts site. We were informed today by the developer that demolition of the site will occur on Monday morning, June 26.
For Chris and Pitts.
If you want to say your last goodbyes to the Chris and Pitts, this is your opportunity to do so. Second announcement is in regards to our third Michio Kana. We will have a third Michio Kana open at the Promenade Shopping Center. There is a soft opening anticipated in the middle of July, we were told by the business owner. That's my report.
Anyone else? What? Awesome. Thank you. All right. Please.
So at our organization, Los Angeles County Development Authority, I just recently met with the folks over in the Community Development Block grant. And last year, 2022, this organization sent $23 million back to the federal government. I don't know how much is going back this year, but I would like to see more community, community economic development here in our city to work with, because if there's millions of dollars going back, we should be trying to secure more funding from this. And I don't know the ins and the outs, but they were really excited because they used to be down the street, across the street from Geezers. And I met with the managers, and I was just, and they really want to not send money back to the federal government. So that'd be nice if we can get. I don't know how involved we are, but that'd be nice to not see dollars go back.
And what's the name of the?
Los Angeles County Development Authority. So it's Community and Economic Development. Housing, there's a Community Resource Center here on Laurel and Florence.
Okay.
So there's free tutoring, there's all types of services that the organization provides from Long Beach to Lancaster. And there's participating cities. I don't think we're a participating city anymore, but it would be nice to see Santa Fe Springs back on that list.
Can we direct staff to look into that and see how we can get back on this list? And we could always use monies if we get back in and maybe use a grant or something from them to get some more services here and that. Thank you. That is really great.
Yeah, staff will look into that. Thank you.
Glad to have you back, Laurel.
I guess I'll, I'll announce it then. Yes, I was gone for, for quite some time. I had a second baby, a baby girl. Her name is Ayla. Thank you. So she's four months old, a very good, easygoing, calm baby, and yeah, she's, she's pretty great. So that's, that's my announcement.
Awesome.
Thank you.
So we're still waiting. Can we move to the other presentation or?
I, I think we can do that for the sake of time. We were strategically trying to present the Objective Design Development Standards Project first, but I think just to keep the, the meeting moving, we'll go ahead and just skip to the second presentation.
So this will be item seven?
Just correct. Just keep in mind that, you know, the Objective Development Standards, it is basically a toolkit that we are using to help implement the targeted zoning code ordinance. In fact, the presenter is walking in, so if you want to just go ahead and
Yeah.
kind of go back to item number six, that's probably.
We'll go back to item number six.
Apologize. Hi, Susan.
Okay, so we're going to item six, Objective Development Standards, the ODS Toolkit, a final presentation by the consulting firm AECOM on the completed ODS Toolkit recommendation that the Planning Commission received. The final project presentation from AECOM provides feedback as decided and therefore on the report. So you have the floor now.
I think it's off, but before Susan begins, I have just a quick introduction for Susan. So tonight, we have a brief presentation by AECOM. It's, we've been working closely with AECOM on this Objective Design Standards Project. The city of Santa Fe Springs, along with three other cities, is part of an Objective Design Standards Bundle project that is funded by SCAG in a REAP grant program. So the primary goal of the Objective Design Standards Bundle is to document, assess, and modernize the standards and processes related to the development of multi-unit and mixed-use projects. By doing so, the project aims to enhance the understanding of Objective Development Standards and expedite housing production. So the final presentation provided by AECOM tonight will detail the various deliverables from the project, including completed Objective Development Standards Toolkit. So it should be noted, as I mentioned earlier, that the results of this bundle, specifically Objective Development Standards, will be integrated into the implementation of our recently adopted general plan, which will be the topic of the, the second presentation tonight. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce Susan Ambrosini, our consultant, who will be providing you with the presentation tonight.
Thank you, Kwong. All right, you can, see, I'll go ahead and, yep, great. Um, so as Kwong mentioned, I'm with AECOM. My name is Susan Ambrosini, so I've been leading the team and working with Kwong over the past year. We're actually working with, in what SCAG is calling a bundle of four cities that you see there. So we're also working with Monobello, Santa Monica, and South Pasadena. So the scope for the project is really the same for all four cities. We're helping them really in a parallel effort along with Santa Fe Springs. So tonight, I'm going to cover what are Objective Development Standards, why do we need them? I'll review the project and what we, what we worked on with Kwong and his team. We'll review some of the key deliverables, including the Objective Development Standards Toolkit, which is really one of the primary deliverables of this project, and then open it up for Q and A. So in terms of an overview about the project, it was funded by SCAG to document, assess, and modernize multi-unit and mixed-use Objective Development Standards and entitlement permitting processes. And the, the objective of the project is really to support a greater understanding of the role of Objective Development Standards and really understand, you know, what are they, how can they help the city streamline, and how can they help elevate the quality of design in the multifamily and mixed-use projects that the city is seeing. So in terms of the timeline, we kicked off the project just over a year ago in March. We did an initial round of public outreach, did a joint study session with Planning Commission and City Council, had a public workshop, and then a second one just recently, and now here we are with the Planning Commission again. So in terms of the project deliverables, they're listed here. We did a high-level analysis of existing policy documents first, really wanted to do a deep dive and understand what standards exist in the city already, what kind of permit procedures exist. And then we updated the multifamily development permit application form and process flowchart, really to help with that streamlining effort and trying to make the process as easy as possible for property owners. We also created an online interactive fee estimator tool, which I'll talk about a little later, and then the Objective Development Standards Toolkit and a Toolkit Fact Sheet. So what are Objective Development Standards? They are a set of rules for development that contain measurable requirements that are easy to understand and review. They are inherently straightforward, requiring no special knowledge or personal experience to understand, interpret, or review. And it includes the removal of subjectivity or design discretion from the design review process, making approval processes more simple, transparent, and streamlined. So to elaborate a little bit, in terms of what are typical development or design standards, this graphic here gives you a sense. It might include standards related to ground floor design, the setback requirement, maybe some transparency requirements, which really relate to the, the number of windows that you see in a building, maximum building height, a common open space requirement. So this is just a sampling. This isn't all-inclusive. It gives you a sense of kind of what, what are we talking about when we're referring to development standards? So what they are not are guidelines, and this is an important distinction. Many cities in California have adopted different types of design guidelines. And it's really important when you're writing the standards that they do not read like guidelines, and there's a few things that can differentiate between the two. Guidelines often include terms like should, may, character, adequate, appropriate, things like that. So an example might be plant appropriate trees along the streets to maintain community character. An objective standard, on the other hand, would say, trees shall be planted at least every, say, 10 feet along the streets to provide shade. So objective standards often have a number, you know, a quantity associated with them, not always. Or they're very clear about what's allowed and what is not allowed. So for example, blank walls may be prohibited along any street-facing facade. Well, that's not very clear. You have to say blank walls of more than, for example, 15 linear feet are prohibited on any street-facing facade. So that's really the process that we've been working through with the cities. So in terms of, you know, why are we doing this, putting things into perspective, California must plan for 2.5 million homes in this next eight-year planning cycle. So while California saw a slight population decline in the recent census, the LA County still grew by 10% from 2010 to 2020. Housing construction continues to lag housing demand, leading to limited supply and rising costs. In California, housing has become the most expensive in the nation. So in order to combat that, there's been a lot of activity at the state level, as you might be aware. There's been a number of Senate and Assembly bills, and I won't go through all of them in detail, but in particular, SB 35 has been very influential. You might have seen some SB 35 projects. And then SB 330, the Housing Crisis Act, which is really focused on streamlining and objective standards to make sure that subjective standards and guidelines are not delaying housing projects from being approved. So where would the standards apply? So there's a few zones that we've been focused on when writing these standards and putting them in the toolkit. So there's the medium-density residential zone, the high-density residential zone, which are differentiated by the, a number of units allowed per acre, 25 and 40. Then we have two mixed-use zones, one at 40 Ds per acre, so that's kind of a, you know, medium intensity. And then a mixed-use TOD, also kind of medium intensity in the TOD pockets. So in terms of the outreach that we did, what we heard was updating development standards pertaining to height, revisiting existing standards for lot size, reducing or eliminating some setbacks on lot coverage-related standards would be helpful, accommodating higher density where appropriate, removing parking constraints where appropriate, the desire to see more mixed use overall, and being thoughtful about reducing setbacks between single-family uses and more dense uses. So we also heard about being careful about new standards as they relate to the arena allocation, and that parking is a concern and reduction should be carefully considered. In terms of the permit application process, make the permit process more user-friendly and really streamline the review process. So, and I'm right now going to spend some time reviewing the project deliverables. So we first did an existing policies and regulation review, so I won't go into detail in the interest of time, but really that was us getting to know Santa Fe Springs, really understanding what are your policies, what are you trying to achieve? What does your general plan say, and what do your existing development standards say? You know, where are there opportunities to assist? We looked at the existing forms, and we also looked at existing projects that have come through the Planning Department for review, just to see the types of projects that you're seeing here. And so we looked at a number of projects. Some of them are shown here on the right. And what we noticed in terms of looking at current project review is that there's opportunities to potentially add some flexibility to the development standards, potentially expand the R3 zone where appropriate, update maximum building height, potentially reduce setbacks and parking. So in terms of the permit application form, we are almost done with the form, so we've been working with Kwong and his team to make it really user-friendly and, and easy to read and understand. So you see a little example of it there on the right. So we were really looking at consolidating forms, making the layout very simple, having directions and checklists for applicants, and then links to related sources and code sections, and also an application review process guidance. The other thing we've been up to is creating an online calculator. And the objective here is to make the fees associated with development really transparent and easy to access for the general public. And so this site is in beta mode. It's almost done. You can see an example of it on the right. It allows a property owner or developer to input key inputs about their project and then get a sense of how that impacts the cost of development. So it's really interactive. It's, it's pretty detailed, too, and we're excited to launch it and see what the the general public has to say in terms of usability and just making that process more transparent. So what is the ODS Toolkit? You know, this has been a really primary focus of the deliverable. It's essentially a, almost a menu, I would say, of development standards. So they're not quite ready to be put into the zoning code. There's going to be a little bit more work there done by the city staff to make its zoning code ready. But it essentially, we try to get you most of the way there in terms of writing a development standard that then could be grouped and, you know, pick, you can pick and choose from this menu or this toolkit for the standards that the city likes that would then be considered for adoption into the actual zoning code. So we worked with all four cities. There's some commonality in terms of some of the zones recommended, and then we worked with the city to kind of customize each of the standards to what would work for that particular city. So I'm going to touch on some of the standards in the toolkit. We'd be here for a couple hours if I went through all of them, so I will spare you that. But I will just give you a little kind of sprinkling of what some of these standards include. So as I mentioned, these are the, the zones that we were looking at in Santa Fe Springs. So here's an example, street setback standard. And I'll talk about this for a moment. You know, often cities have minimum setback requirements. That's kind of been standard for many years. And, you know, sometimes it works, but what it doesn't do is really define the street wall or the urban form, because you might set back that minimum amount, but a developer might choose to set back an additional 10 or 20 feet. And so there's not necessarily consistency as you're walking or driving down the street in terms of the the kind of urban form that you're seeing. So it can often lead to a very sporadic urban character. So you might get kind of a strip mall format next to an older, more traditional format where the building is addressing the sidewalk directly. And so you get more of an eclectic feel, and it doesn't really contribute to that sense of place that often people are looking for in the cities where they live. And so this setback standard allows for a little bit of flexibility from that minimum setback, up to five feet, but it does create more of a defined street wall if adopted. However, we know from working with cities who have adopted more strict street setback requirements over the last 10, 15 years, that some of them actually ended up with unintended consequences because they didn't bake in enough flexibility. So there might be portions of the building that should be set back because they're creating a nice plaza or a common open space, or there's driveway access that's needed. And so this standard proposed here allows for up to 30% of the frontage of that parcel or the building to be set back beyond this five-foot range. So it essentially really helps to find the street wall that adds that flexibility. So these were all the things we were thinking about when we were writing the standards that would be potentially adopted in the city. So here's a similar standard, but in a multifamily environment. So here, the, the percentage required is 50 instead of 70. So there's these subtle differences when you're in a mixed-use environment, because you might be commingling with commercial uses, where you have more of that pedestrian activity at the street. Or in a multifamily zone, you might want to have more of a front yard or sort of more flexibility, and so that setback kind of requirement only applies to that 50%. So, you know, often our standards can be applied across different types of uses and typologies of buildings, but this is an example of where we recommended a subtle difference between the two. In terms of what we call interior step backs, so that's how the building relates to the neighbor, to the side, or behind, one great way to address that and have it be very flexible across different zones and across different areas where there might be different adjacency issues is to use something like this, which is called, you know, it's a plane essentially that you establish. And so the building that you can see on the right there needs to slowly step back in the upper floors within that 45-degree plane to allow for that transition between a, maybe a single-family use and a denser use. So this is one way that the city can approach that. So the other thing we looked at was design at the ground level, particularly in mixed-use environments. For example, shown here, when you have ground floors that have an emphasized entry that uses certain design elements like an awning, a canopy, a trellis, an overhang, a recessed entry, they all contribute to the quality of the building. They contribute to people knowing even where the entrance is and just good, high design quality. And so having kind of these simple but straightforward Objective Design Standards can help elevate that design quality. And so requiring entrances on the street-facing facade, for example, creates a more welcoming environment for those walking down the street and trying to create that vitality in, for example, a commercial corridor or downtown area. So entrances in multifamily areas can be quite different. The picture here shows, for example, stoops walking up to the entrance. So there's a number of different entrance treatments that can be used. We didn't want to be overly prescriptive in terms of the architectural style. So we created standards, sometimes with menus, as you can see here. So we didn't say, this is what you have to do to create a nice entrance, but you can choose from, you know, one of these five options, for example, or, you know, or in some cases, maybe you have to do two out of the three. So we did use this menu approach, and here's an example of a residential building would have to adhere to at least three of these six standards. So another thing we focused on was transparency in windows. We certainly want to avoid blank walls. We want to have that kind of interaction between the inside and outside of the building. You know, create a welcoming environment. And one of the ways you can do that is through having a transparency requirement. So essentially sets a percent of the building facade area that needs to be transparent, or essentially windows. And so we did that in both the mixed use on the ground floor level as well as on the entire front street facade. So almost done here, but there's a few more. We have our common open space requirement. So, you know, as you're building new multifamily units, people, as we know, especially with COVID, we need access to light and air and common open space. We want to establish nice environments with our neighbors. And so one of the ways that you can do that is through a common open space requirement. And this is just an example here, a photo in a, in a multifamily development. But they're often in a courtyard space. Sometimes they're actually on a rooftop or in the backyard. So there's a lot of flexibility depending on how it's implemented in the city as to where that open space can be. But you want to not only require balconies or patios, but often, but also a space for people to gather together, bring out the barbecue, you know, have a, you know, have a neighborly kind of interaction and a place to hang out within, you know, that's reserved just for the residents. And so having that right common open space requirement can be important. But we did recommend some design standards associated with that, so you don't get a developer who just, you know, paves the entire common open space and meets their requirement. You want to make sure that they're landscaping it, that it's actually a nice space for people to be. And as I mentioned, private open space, this is a pretty common requirement in, in cities, but the kind of difference between the private and common can vary. But requiring a certain amount, it can be very beneficial, not just for people who want that private open space, but also for facade design. And this is a good example of how balconies integrated into the facade can help create visual interest in the building architecture, as opposed to kind of a flat facade with just, you know, windows. You can see how the balconies actually really contribute to the, the design of the facade. And then we thought about surface parking. So if you do have surface parking, what are some things, you know, where should it be permitted? And then what kind of landscape requirements should you have within that surface parking? So in our sample toolkit of standards, we discussed a minimum setback of 30 feet, for example. That essentially prohibits a street mall, street, sorry, a strip mall-type development because it, it forces the building to interact with the sidewalk, and the parking has to be kind of either off to the side or behind the building. So it doesn't affect the number of spaces, but it does affect the placement of the spaces and areas where you want to have that pedestrian environment. So that's it, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I have a question. On page 32, is that an example of what we would like it to, what we would want it to look like? is that an example of what we would like it to, what we would want it to look like?
Um, so are you referring to in the actual standards that you're looked at or the PowerPoint?
Well, in the PowerPoint.
Okay, let me go back. Yeah, so.
Sorry, can you go back one more? That one?
Here. So this is an example where it, it allows for some, this, what we're trying to show here is that having some flexibility in the setback can be a good thing. And one of the reasons for that is it allows outdoor dining. So here's an example. This happens to be on Lake Avenue in Pasadena, where they have a very consistent street wall. If you've walked down it, the buildings all are right at the sidewalk. However, allowing for a little bit of those kind of pockets of flexibility can actually provide these surprising nice, you know, gathering spaces and open spaces. But you could imagine if everyone started setting back their building to that level or the entire building was set back, then it would start to kind of degrade that traditional storefront kind of character along lake. So trying to strike that right balance of letting a portion of the development setback, but not the entire development, and then not allowing parking to be placed in front of the buildings.
Any more questions, Commissioner Ayala? Commissioner Mora?
Of course. A great presentation. I'm glad that we're going to get rid of that ambiguity between the guidelines and the standards. And moving forward, I think this is going to be a, yeah, it's going to make our city look.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Jimenez?
Yeah, great presentation. And I had another question regarding this development on 31. So how do you choose which places you'll give the setback to and others that won't?
Yeah, that's a really good question. It really, and this will ultimately be up to the city, you know, the planning staff and, and you and the city council ultimately making a decision. But it really depends on the objectives of that particular community and the kind of place that they're trying to create. So if you already have kind of a majority of traditional buildings that are, you know, adjacent to the street, that might be a good opportunity to really keep that consistent character. If there's a corridor that is more auto oriented, it's already majority strip malls. The community wants that kind of easy access for, you know, their vehicle trips. Maybe you don't apply it there. So it's really about figuring out what are the targeted places where you want to have that kind of street environment? And what are the places where you might not? But I will say for, so I'm referring mostly just now to the kind of mixed use commercial corridor environment. When you're in a multifamily environment, you, it does really help contribute to a sense of place to have that consistency in setbacks. I mean, you see it all the time in single family neighborhoods where they all have the 20 foot setback or 25 foot setback. And it just creates that consistent rhythm on the street. Well, the same holds true in multifamily. If you have that consistent, you know, it might just be 10 feet. And in some cases, it's actually, you know, five, if you're in downtown Long Beach or in that kind of more urban environment. In some cases, it might, 15 feet might be appropriate. And you just create that really nice green space in front of the multifamily building. But having that consistent character, I think generally in multifamily areas is something that you want to implement.
Commissioner Ayala, any questions? Oh, not Ayala, Flores, I'm out of it.
Yeah, I do.
Wait a minute.
From my understanding, we had like planning restrictions on outdoor seating and dining and stuff. Is, is that still in place, that policy?
So we do allow for outdoor dining, but on a limited basis. It's not specified in the code. So this actually is going to be eventually put into the code, at least it's starting with the mixed use zones.
And then I have another question. I just, I know post-COVID, things are starting to change with mixed use, outdoor, front facade, curbside dining. But I've also seen municipalities adopt like parklets where they use part of the street and the parking, they put these barriers and structures. What's your opinion on this opposed to both sides where you can have dining on both sides? You still have the public right of way. You just restrict parking, but what's your position on that?
Yeah, I mean, I think both honestly can work tandemly to be very successful. And it really kind of depends on where you're at. But I think as, as a basis, you definitely want to have the, the private development and the, you know, the sidewalk and the setback really supporting that environment. Because if you had, for example, a parklet next to a strip mall, you can, you can see how that might feel disjointed. But if you really, if you have it next to a more pedestrian oriented urban form, then they work together to create a really nice vibrant environment. So I think it's just whether or not you have the parklets or not, I think having this foundation of high quality design standards is beneficial regardless. But absolutely, I've seen the parklets be really successful in many cities.
Yeah, well, I appreciate your presentation, and I think this type of outdoor dining just brings the quality of life for the residents. So I think, I mean, it's great that we're having this discussion.
I have one last question in regards to the, the balconies or the patios or the, like the condominiums or apartments that we saw on the slide on the presentation. Is there, who sets these standards or restrictions as to how these patios are supposed to be maintained? And, and the reason why I ask is I've seen some of these in South Pasadena that are covered clean. I've seen some of these in Koreatown that have girls and, you know, clothes drying. How, how do we know that it's going to be maintained like the way it is in the picture?
Yeah, good question. And I don't know, Quang, if you have specific rules in Santa Fe Springs that you want to address, and then I can also kind of address it more broadly.
Right. I, I think as it pertains to multifamily, a, a lot of these multifamily developments will probably have its, its own CCNRs, which will govern them. But outside of that, we do have property maintenance ordinance that we can also use to address basically just clothing or things that are, you know, not where they should be.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of, you hear this a lot in almost every city, even, you know, even cities that have, you know, a great sense of pride in their, their particular multifamily area. You still run into the bikes being stored outside and stuff like that. The only kind of thing from a development standard standpoint that I've seen is sometimes they'll have requirements to make the balconies solid or opaque. So this is a good example of where they're not opaque and you can see right through them. So obviously, if someone used it as a storage area, it would look very bad. However, the flip side is if you do require them to be opaque, then it is somewhat limiting from a design standpoint, and it does kind of add to the, I'd say massing or kind of heaviness of the building if not done well. So I think it really is kind of a individual city decision as to what the risks are weighed against whether or not you want to be more prescriptive about the balcony materials.
Thank you. I just want to, the same with my colleagues, this is a great presentation done by your organization, along with the countless hours of city staff. It's also making things more come together, which I think on the city side, our first main one will be where Chris and Pitts and everything is. So I'm very excited to see how that's going to be with multi-use with residential and our commerce there at the same time. So this is really well put. And not bad to comply with either. So you gave quite enough options to people when they come in. And I just want to thank you and staff for that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right.
Okay. Well, I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Enjoy your evening. Okay, so we're going to move right along to our study session number seven. Targeted zoning ordinance update, a presentation by the consulting firm MIG on revising specific sections of the city's zoning ordinance for consistency with state law and the recently adopted general plan, and on creating new high density and mixed use land uses and development standards.
Evening commissioners. Before Jose begins, I just have a quick introduction. For the study session tonight, we have a presentation from MIG. They're helping us with the targeted zoning code update and previously with the comprehensive general plan. Just basically ensuring now that the zoning code update provides some alignment between our two primary planning documents, the general plan as well as the zoning ordinance. Some of you may recall that during the general plan process, we did have extensive engagement. That is also true for this targeted zoning code update. You know, after many revisions and considerations of the feedback that we received, tonight's presentation includes basically the proposed changes to the ordinance with regards to those comments. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce our MIG consultant, Jose Rodriguez, who's, will be providing tonight's presentation.
Great, thanks, Quang. And good evening, Chairperson Carver Hall and members of the Planning Commission. As Quang said, my name is Jose Rodriguez and I'm with MIG. And I think many of you recall many previous meetings we've had, both for the general plan and the zoning code, but we're, I would say, telling Quang earlier, where the, the light at the end of the tunnel is, is, is starting to get a little more brighter. So for the agenda today, and we've, we've done this presentation before, but now we're going to get into a little bit of the, the details. And you have now a copy of the draft text. We're going to talk about the targeted zoning amendment, different mixed uses, the new zones. And this is again, also building off the presentation that AECom just had, had just done. The multifamily. In addition to those sections, there's going to be a revised zoning map, so we'll introduce that as well. One thing that we haven't brought back to you, as we build or create new zones, they also affect the parking standards. So we're making adjustments to the parking standards, and I'll talk a little bit about that as well. I'm going to talk about the status of our non-conforming section. If, if you recall during the general plan process, that was a, a significant component of the general plan, particularly from the business community. So I'm going to talk about the status and where that's at. As well as the housing element, we're still working to get compliance from the state on the housing element. And we'll talk about next steps for the zoning amendments and then any questions and comments that the commissioners have. All right. So if you recall, we have created three new mixed use zones. And again, these complement or are consistent and align with the general plan zoning land use designations. We also created or revised the R3 zoning district and then created a new R4 zoning again, district again, to, to be consistent with the general plan. And as I mentioned earlier in the, in our agenda, an updated zoning map, and we'll just briefly show what that looks like. And then I'm going to get into a little bit of some details on the changes to the parking standards. Because one thing we recognize in previous study sessions, both from the Planning Commission, City Council, parking's important. And so we want to make sure that we set the right standards for parking, but also make sure that we're addressing some of the issues that the state is bringing up in terms of parking and the cost of housing and so forth. And then, as I mentioned, the non-conforming section, I'll, I'll give a quick status. Previous meetings, we've done a handful of meetings, again, previous study sessions with this body as well as the city council. We've had a zoning advisory group that we've also met with to help guide and provide direction as we crafted the zoning code, a community workshop, but also meeting with the business group. And they primarily focused on the non-conforming section. But did they, some of the business group members did talk about some of the mixed use zoning codes and how that, how some of those properties were zoned on the map as well as the general plan. So why are we making the changes to the zoning code? I'll, I'll go through this brief because I've probably given you guys this presentation several times. This was in the general plan. Part of the general plan was the housing element. The state required a number of housing units to be accommodated, both by the land use and zoning. It was 950 plus housing units, 952 is the actual number there. So now we're creating, we, we did that in the general plan. We identified where the housing can go. We, we identified the mixed use, the multifamily. The zoning provides that detail on not only where the housing goes, but the standards. Not only are this, there, not only are there standards, but then the development design that AECom just mentioned, Susan mentioned about the design of it as well too. So they all work together to meet that housing need that the state is looking for to, forward to. As Susan mentioned, the 2.5 million plus new housing units the state's looking at for the next eight years. This is part of that process. So let's go through the mixed use zones. You all should have received draft copies of the mixed use text. Keep in mind, this is a study session, so we'll be working with staff. We're going to, we'd love to hear your comments, even if you don't have comments today. Over the next couple of weeks, you can give comments to city staff and we'll try to incorporate those into the mixed use standards. You'll see there's still a couple of sections we need to clean up and revise, and we're working with the city attorney's office, city staff to continue to clean up those mixed use standards, parking standards and so forth, before we take it to public, to the public hearing. Some of the questions you asked earlier is what, what does mixed use happen? What does it look like? Where does it, where, where does that street front look like? This is the, the map from the general plan that shows the mixed use zones. We have the downtown mixed use zone in the center, the center of the city. We have some mixed use corridors and mixed use districts near future transit and existing transit stations. So the zoning applies to those exact same areas, so consistently with the general plan. And so we have the standards and the uses and the, where the mixed use and how that applies to the mixed use areas. So kind of what Susan mentioned was a little bit of the design and development standards. The whole mixed use standards also includes what type of uses in mixed use. How much residential, how much commercial? Is it residential alone? Is commercial allowed? Are drive-throughs allowed? The different types of uses and so forth. So that's all spelled out. The specific heights of building, the setbacks in combination. So staff, we worked, we're able to work with staff to bring in some of the standards for the development standards and design standards and bring those into what AECom has created and combined it into the zoning. So we get the whole package of standards for each of the mixed use zones. So some of the key components in the mixed use, so rather than going through all the, the standards specifically, I'm just going to call out a handful of items that are important and are key as part of the mixed use. So we modernized the use table, so there's large tables for both mixed use and the multifamily that identify, is it a permitted use? Is it prohibited? Is it require a conditional use permit? Not only that, every single use should have a definite, not should, it will have a definition to clearly define what that use is. So there's no ambiguity on what that use is being, being proposed. And if that use being proposed is not on there, there are standards in the existing zoning code that, where the developer can make that determination on, well, this actually is that use and there's appeal process and so forth. But we have an exhaustive list of uses, both prohibited and permitted and conditionally permitted. The drive-throughs, that was one thing we heard from the previous study session that the, that both council and planning commission still want to consider drive-throughs in the mixed use zones, but that they're conditionally used. So conditional use permits are required for, for drive-throughs. And so based on location or the environment that even Susan was talking about creating, if, if the drive-through is not appropriate or if it's set back elsewhere on the site, the conditional use permit would allow that flexibility to determine what that area looks like and so forth. As I mentioned, the objective development standards that Susan talked about, we incorporated that into the mixed use standards. Both the step back standards that Susan talked about, that plane, that's important both for the mixed use and the multifamily. We put in a set of bicycle parking standards, but we're working with city staff to see if, to conform the Cal envir, the Cal Green, the Cal, Cal Green code that allows more of the green building standards. It does have some bicycle parking standards as well. So kind of our final cleanup is to make sure that they're consistent or that they're, that they're not duplicative. And if there's additional biking standards we want to add, we may address it and say, hey, Cal Green provides these park, bicycle parking standards, but our code maybe go beyond on a few other items. So we're working those out. We do have the draft bike, bicycle parking standards in the code now. Specifically for mixed use, the two things that we heard in previous meetings was allowing for shared use, parking, parking for shared uses and then off-site parking standards. So if you have a mixed use and the building takes up, you know, a large portion of the site, and they can accommodate that parking within a certain amount of feet, could parking be provided that's walking distance? And particularly if you're making a walkable or pedestrian environment, that makes sense. And the example that Susan provided on Lake Street in Pasadena with the lemonade, there's shared parking facilities nearby. And the example that Susan provided on Lake Street in Pasadena with the lemonade, there's shared parking facilities nearby. And so that again, um, you can park once and then walk to the different uses. And so those are options that we provide to provide that flexibility for parking because we know parking is probably one of the most expensive components for multifamily and mixed use buildings. And then the architectural design standards, uh, are also in that's, uh, section. So for multifamily, again, very similar, um, obviously different districts. And again, looking at the districts that Susan, uh, had mentioned previously in her presentation, uh, for multifamily, again, we provided the draft text, uh, the purpose statement, all the draft, the uses. Uh, and again, we folded in AECOM's, uh, development, uh, objective development standards in there. So it's all, again, in one complete package. And as Susan mentioned, mixed use development standards could be a little bit different depending on commercial on the front floor or the ground floor, or if there's residential wrapped around. And same thing for multifamily, you know, the, there's a little bit, can be subtle differences between the development standards. Not only development standards, but, uh, the heights of the building, the different types of uses. Uh, so the multifamily captures all that. Again, some of the key components for the multifamily, what, which was important was consistency with the general plan. Obviously putting in the, those updated modern tables with definitions for each one. Holding in AECOM's multifamily objective development standards. And then same thing with mixed use, we're looking at the bicycle parking standards to make sure they're consistent with the green building code. All right. When we do the general plan, there's that land use plan and we really focus, uh, on where the different land uses, where to accommodate those 952 housing units to make sure that the city has an updated zoning map that's consistent with the general plan, land use plan. We've up, make this updated changes. And so you can see here are all the, the different, uh, uh, zones, showing the mixed use zones for, uh, where they're located. And so up, is updating the map and ensuring consistency. One thing we're still working on with staff that we realize that we, uh, need to put back in here is the agricultural zone. So if you go back to your old zoning map, there is an agricultural district. Um, and it did apply to some of the larger lots within single families, but some of those zones have been, uh, changed out. It also applied to some properties along the San Gabriel River. And so, uh, and some of those are parks and some of those are, uh, Edison easements. And I think there's a nursery in there, so we will put back the agricultural zone, uh, where, where the zoning originally had designated at, uh, for consistency. Uh, and where, and where staff made that, uh, thought that would make sense. And so we accidentally left that out, so we want to put that back in. So when this does come before, in public hearings, you'll see the agricultural zones. It's not a, not a mistake. All right, so the following, uh, slides just kind of showed a little bit of the detail, um, of the different zoning districts as well as the overlays that were also previously in the zoning map. Those are also on, uh, this map as well. All right, so let's get into the parking standards. And I know, and I don't expect you to, to read this, uh, but you have given a copy of the parking standards. And so the key things that we've updated in the parking standards are the mixed use zones, which is actually one little column, uh, or one row at the end that basically says if your mixed use has so much residential, your multifamily parking standards apply. If it has commercial, the types of commercial, the commercial parking standards apply. The key areas that we really updated, uh, the parking standards. And if you go back and look at the housing element, there is a program, um, and the state kind of pushed, uh, the, the MIG team and city staff to say. And by the way, we, we've prepared numerous housing elements in California. That was one of the, the key, um, uh, policy directions from the state was to get cities to relook at their parking requirements and to ensure that there are not, uh, being a constraint to development, uh, particularly affordable housing. And so how do you, how do you, how do you determine whether there's a, it's, it's a constraint, uh, to affordable housing? So we, we did talk to developers during the general plan process, um, and we've had public meetings. So how do we create that balance? Uh, and one thing we heard from the city council is, you know, there are some parking impacted areas. The area by Norwalk in Washington, particularly with the existing apartments there, that is a parking impacted area. Other areas and neighborhoods where, you know, some of the, um, parking from, you know, different, uh, uses can impact some of the single family neighborhoods. So we wanted to respect that, but also still kind of address what each, what the state is asking, uh, for us with parking standards. So the thing we, what we decided to do was for multifamily, um, is to keep the parking standards the same as they are. So right now there's two parking, uh, requirements for every unit. So that stays the same, but we decided to give some flexibility elsewhere. Uh, and how we did that was one, was defining the guest parking. There are no guest parking standards now, um, and staff, um, guest parking is still important and developers recognize that as well. And so they would go back and forth with staff, uh, to say, hey, what, how many, how many should we, how many should we, we put? What we did was just define it. So this way the developers and applicants see, hey, it's one, uh, guest parking space for every four units. So it's really clear, um, what that standard is. And so there's no guessing and negotiating and so forth. The other thing is the covered parking. Uh, some of the code was a little bit silent on covered parking, uh, whether it's carport or, or structure. Uh, so what the code does is make it clear, it's 50% of the parking requirement. So for every two spaces, at least half of the spaces have to be covered. That cover could be a carport, um, or it could be in a parking structure or within a garage. If it's a, if it's a townhouse. And if it's a townhouse, uh, they might put the both, you know, the two spaces might be in the garage. So again, it's making this clear, the clear, uh, standards for, um, uh, for parking. This was my summary slide. Uh, the other thing also was, uh, again, flexibility was allowing for tandem spaces. And so particularly for multifamily and not that every single space, uh, but a maximum of 30% of the parking spaces could be tandem. Uh, and then we, uh, put in specific, uh, standards so that, uh, the tandem is for, uh, the two spaces would be for one particular unit. So that if they're, you know, out of that unit, they can negotiate when they can move the cars. And as a, as a, when I was a student, uh, in the west side of going, uh, to school, uh, I, I was in a tandem parking space. And when I had class, we would work, who had the class in the morning and then we put the car out, uh, at, at the tandem. So, um, but it provided that flexibility and less area to accommodate for spaces. So, uh, allowing for tandem. The other thing, um, that we put into the code, uh, to address state law is, and some of you may have heard about it, is not requiring minimum parking standards, um, particularly, not particularly, but if your proposed project is within a half mile of a transit station, um, and it's, um, either transit station or what's called a high-quality, uh, transit stop. And there's a couple of ways the state defines that. One is if there's two intersecting, um, bus stops that have, um, headways that are 15 minutes or less, qualifies as a high-quality transit stop. But what the heck did I just say? What does that mean? If you have a transit, let's, let's say you go to a bus stop and it takes, you know, you're waiting there for 30 minutes and an hour for the next bus to, to arrive, that is not a high-quality transit stop. That means there's not a lot of people, there's not a demand at that parking, uh, at that bus stop, uh, that negates more buses at that stop. But if the bus stop has a, has a bus coming every 15 minutes and it's intersecting another bus, uh, bus line, that is considered a high-quality transit stop. And by state law, within a half mile of that transit stop, uh, the state's saying you don't have to provide parking. Uh, you don't have to provide minimum parking requirements. Uh, so essentially the applicant can say, hey, particularly, particularly next to a transit station. Uh, so any of the metro, light rail stations, the A-line, um, and eventually down, down the road when it comes on Washington, those are going to be high-quality transit stations. MetroLink station, that is your current existing high-quality transit station. Even though, um, um, you know, whatever the frequency of the tr- of the metro, MetroLink's train is, it doesn't matter. It's a, it's a commuter train station. It's considered a high-quality transit station. So housing proposals within a half mile walking distance of that station doesn't have to provide minimum parking standards. However, um, developers and applicants, uh, know that parking's still important. Certain areas of Santa Fe Springs are probably not the most walkable yet. But the goal is to create some districts and neighborhoods that are a little bit more walkable. So they could still provide parking, but they don't have to meet the parking standards that the current code provides. The two spaces per one unit, maybe they'll provide one space per unit or half a unit or more guest parking. Whatever it is, by state law, they don't have to provide the minimum parking standards. So we've created the language to be specific, to say if you're within that high-quality transit station half mile, um, the language we put in there shows that they don't have to provide the minimum parking standards. And I'm happy to answer any, any questions related to that because I know that's, um, it's going to be important, not only for Santa Fe Springs, but many of the communities across California that are near a high-quality transit, uh, station. The other parking standards we did provide is also for the care uses, uh, related to housing, the transitional housing, the emergency shelters. Again, those are things that are identified in the housing element. We made sure that they're, um, clear parking standards for those. All right, moving on to non-conforming, uh, we are not bringing the non-conforming as a draft yet, uh, to this, uh, body, to the Planning Commission. However, the staff, uh, is still, uh, determined to continue to work with the business, uh, community, the industrial group, uh, business group. Uh, they're going to plan, uh, multiple meetings with them. Unfortunately, at this point, we wanted to get the mixed use and zoning out of the way, uh, get those adopted. And the city will continue to work with the business group, uh, based on policy identified in the general plan. And, and so at this point, uh, city staff, we decided to kind of separate that into its own track in a different adoption period, uh, so that there's more time for the business group and city staff to continue to, uh, look at those, uh, standards and address, uh, to make sure both are, are meeting their needs. For the housing element, uh, in May, a couple of months ago, well, last month, uh, we've, uh, city staff submitted their third, uh, housing element, uh, to the state. Uh, they've requested an informal review, um, and so we'll hear back to see what comments they provide. But after three rounds, we are, um, uh, going to push for making sure that, uh, the state is, uh, well, depends on what the state comes back with, but we'll wait to see what their response is based on our, our third housing, uh, third housing element. But we felt like, uh, we worked really hard to make sure we met every single, um, uh, requirement that the state was asking for. We're looking for an informal review, meaning they'll probably give us a phone call and say, yep, you're this close. Or there's a couple of minor comments. We'll, we'll make those comments and then do the formal, um, uh, submit to, to the state. So next steps, uh, the next couple, uh, of weeks will be important to finalize and, and wrap up these zoning, parking, uh, uh, requirements for the mixed use and multifamily. So we're looking at a July hearing for the Planning Commission in front of this body. Uh, and then August and September, uh, to take it front of the city council. And for any ordinance changes, if you recall, it does take two readings from the city council to adopt. And then 30 days after to make those, um, ordinances or the zoning changes effective. Uh, so probably in October, towards the end of October is when they'll actually be, uh, ready to use, uh, for applicants. So with that, I'm be happy to entertain any questions or comments. Thank you.
When we have the, when it goes to public hearing for our planning commission in July and then it's going to go to city council, is there going to be a joint one with the city council?
I can answer that. So as it stands, staff anticipates presenting this before the planning commission on July 10th. Uh, and we'll ask for your recommendation to the city council. And I think due to some, uh, I guess, um, summer vacations or restrictions of time, uh, we anticipate presenting it before the city council at their second meeting in August for the first reading. And then, uh, the first meeting in September for the second reading.
Any questions from the Commissioners? Go ahead.
I haven't completely reviewed the general plan, but there was three things that I was just wondering. One, is there going to be any reductions of open green space with the housing init- initiatives? And then the other two, were there considerations for, I know before there was something talks about hotel to generate, um, transient occupancy tax revenues? And, um, the last one is, is there any consideration in this general plan for the food desert that we're sitting in right now?
Quang, I'll go ahead and, you want me to answer? Why don't I answer then? You can, you can follow up if there's anything I've, I've missed. In terms of reducing any green space, there's no, um, anticipated reduction of any of the green space by adding the mixed use or the multifamily, all of the existing parks, the, the land, um, along, the, the parks along the San Gabriel River. Those are all, uh, planned to, all those parks, primarily all owned by the city are planned to, to remain. So there's no anticipation of, of building over any of those. Now, the part, the, part of the general plan policies as new housing development gets built, uh, that there's, there's impact fees or that there's, um, that they can provide both private open space in, in, maybe in some possibilities, uh, some common open space or public open space as part of those, those, uh, development. But, uh, some of the examples of, um, the apartments that recently built have a lot of private open space, like the, the pool area. Um, and even the examples that, uh, Susan had provided, provide some of the, uh, uh, that open space area. So there's no anticipated loss of any open space areas part of the general plan. The hotel, you, you're talking about as we, as more hotel, uh, as hotels are built, uh, the city can, uh, generate, uh, transient tax based off those hotels, correct? Uh, so the general plan did target and had specific policies to attract new hotels within the downtown area and then wherever else in the city, uh, recognizing that there are none now. And I know there's been attempts, uh, by the city staff, uh, to, to attract a, a hotel, uh, in the city. And so there's definitely policies to, to do that. And maybe staff can provide an update if there's been any, um, news in terms of trying to attract a, a, a hotel. The last question is about the food desert and I, and, uh, that is something that the environmental justice element definitely did look at. Uh, we mapped, um, particularly in the background report because we know grocery stores can change. Uh, so the background report captures a, a certain time. Uh, I think, Quang, I'm trying to remember, it was like 2020. Nonetheless, uh, we've identified where the grocery stores are at, um, and where fresh foods were provided and kind of did a mapping. And we looked at the US, the United, United States Agricultural Department, food desert area. And, and it looks at, uh, low in, lower income areas as well as those that are lacking, um, automobile ownership. So there's definitely specific policies, uh, to look at where possible to bring in a grocery store west of, um, of Norwalk, where possible. Not only, uh, looking at grocery stores, but expanding community gardens. We've identified priority areas in the environmental justice element to expand community gardens. We know there's one in the center part of the city, uh, near, near city hall, not too far from here, but maybe near the senior housing, um, and then other target areas for, uh, for community gardens.
Yeah, and it's just for lower. Well, I have, thanks.
I'll piggyback on that a little bit. I think Jose did a good job with the food desert question, but I'll, I'll add to the, uh, open space comment. And if you recall, in the, uh, objective design standards, um, there, there's actually requirements for private open space, common open space and in some, it's also public open space. So there's going to be definitely a requirement to, to provide all three of those amenities or open space types. Um, with regards to hotel, Jose is right, we, we did target the downtown area as a potential area. As you recall, there was previously a hotel approved there. Um, I think it's safe to say at this point that hotel is gone away. But doesn't mean that another hotel can't replace it either there or somewhere else in the downtown. Uh, the other, uh, location that we have targeted is also the freeway fronting properties to maximize on, uh, yeah, the visibility of the freeway.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Great, thank you, thank you.
Okay, so we've done announcements and it looks like, anything else? You could adjourn at 7:12.